Yeah.
Okay. The following petitions will be heard by the zoning board of appeals. On Monday, October 26th, 2020, at 7 o'clock will be conducted remotely via Zoom in accordance with Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order. Said order suspended the provisions of the open meeting law to promote public health and social distancing. This public hearing will not be conducted in an open, publicly accessible place. Instead, public access to the hearing and deliberations we achieve by adequate alternative means that allow the public to follow proceedings in a third-party communication technology that is readily accessible to the public via the internet and telephone. And then the, uh, the, uh, public access is listed. And the telephone number is And the webinar ID is 832-576-2530. The international numbers are available and listed in the publication. Uh, in my publication, I don't know about on the screen. We have one, two, three, four. Four petitions which we're taking up as they are printed up on our agenda. And the first petition is docket number 20-25, 56 Stonewood Lane. Diana Delaney, is she on Zoom?
I am.
Where, where are you?
Um, right here.
Raise your hand. Oh, there you are. Thank you, Diana. All right, Diana Delaney, applicant for relief from bylaw requirements under chapter 135, 403, 135, 701, and 135, 707. To demolish an existing portion of the single-family dwelling and to construct a 16-foot by 20-foot feet addition to demolish the existing deck to construct a 100-square-foot sun porch and to construct a 4-foot by 13-foot roof overhang. The applicant seeks a finding as the proposed improvements will intensify a non-conforming rear yard setback of 10.2 feet where 30 feet is required. The property is located at 56 Stonewood Lane, Braintree, Mass. In his own residence A, as shown on our assessors map, 303, 18, plot 16, with the land area of 7,741 square feet. Now, I forgot to introduce the members of the zoning board. It's kind of hard to do that on Zoom, but I'll try to. I can only see what, do it on where we are on my screen. So I'm the one that's talking. My name is Steve Carl, and I'm the chairman. To my immediate right on my screen is, uh, member Gary Walker. On the bottom of the screen. On my left is Mike Ford. Next to Mike Ford is Tim Burke. Skip the next person on my screen, and that would be, uh, Richard McDonough.
Oh.
And that, uh, that makes up the zoning board of appeals. Okay, so, uh, I read the petition. Connor, is the, are the, is the assessor's certification in here?
No, it is not. I apologize.
Okay, but I'm gonna. I'll say that the abutters and the abutters to the abutters within 300 feet have been duly notified. We have a recommendation of the planning board on this petition. Uh, the planning board voted to endorse the staff recommendation. The staff recommendation, if I remember properly, was in favor with some conditions. The usual conditions regarding the 20-day appeal period, filing a copy of the decision with the town clerk. Um, any changes to the record plans will require further ZBA approval. Um, upon completion of the, of the foundation and prior to any construction, uh, the applicant shall submit a certified, certified foundation plan prepared by a registered professional land surveyor. Upon completion of construction and receiving a temporary certificate of occupancy or a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide an as-built plan. All windows and exteriors shall be designed to match or complement one another. And this approval does not authorize any changes to the topography of the site. And all those conditions are listed on their recommendation of approval. Sitting on this petition will be myself, Mr. Ford, Mr. McDonough. The alternate will be Mr. Walker. Okay, we'll hear from the petitioner and/or her representative, Ms. Delaney. Tell us what you would like to do in line.
Okay, okay. I'm Scott Perry. I'm Mrs. Delaney's builder for, uh, for the project. So basically, what, what we're doing is, um, taking the, the existing, the, the major is the major, the, the major work is on the, uh, left side of the house when you look at the drawings. So we're basically squaring off the existing house. There's a small, kind of like a funny jog. If you look at the floor plan, um, on the plans.
Yeah?
And I just gotta. I just gotta find them. Okay, so if you, if you look at the, on drawing A12, the foundation plan, the only bit of real foundation work is we're infilling where the jog is in, in the addition on the left-hand side. So that's, that's really, we're not completely redoing the foundation. It's just squaring off the building um, on the addition.
Okay.
And then we're, from there, we're just, um, extending, I believe, the addition about 18 inches, uh, further, uh, in the front. Um, we're not really extending anything in the rear. It's just coming out front. Um, and then, so, and then we would reconfigure the roof to a hip roof so it would stay in style with the existing house. And then on, in the, in the rear of the house, there's an existing deck, and we're proposing a, uh, covered roof on the rear deck, on the existing rear deck that's on the, uh, back of the addition now. So if you go back to the floor, yep, so there's the left hand. If you look at A7, the elevation there, we're proposing a hip roof that would follow the existing design of the, um, existing house. And on A8 is the rear elevation where it shows where there's an existing deck. We're proposing a roof, uh, covered, uh, deck on that area in the back of the house.
A sunroom.
Yep, like a little sunroom. Yep, correct. And then on the, and when you're looking at, uh, elevation A8 on the left-hand side, the, um, we're basically just reconfiguring the roof construction. The, um, addition is already there, but it has a very flat roof on it. So we're just re-conforming that into a hip roof so it'll tie into the, uh, aesthetics of the house. And then we're proposing to, uh, put new asphalt shingles over the entire house and also install.
Shut yours off.
Okay. Is there anything else, Mr. Perry?
Nope, the only, the only other thing that we're doing, if you look to the, on drawing, I believe, A8, is a, um, a little entrance way. It's existing now, but it has a sloped roof on it, and we're just reconfiguring the existing roof that is there, uh, as you enter in from the rear and just simplifying the steps. So the steps, uh, are going along the house versus straight out. If you look at the existing drawings, the rear steps are just gonna be reconfigured so they go along the side of the house. And then there's an existing deck, a small deck and steps that go into the addition that's on the left side. Those are gonna be removed. Uh, the slide is gonna be removed, and then there's gonna be a new pair of double-hung windows put in that small addition over there on the left.
Connor, if you could go back to the first plan, the, uh, land survey plan showing the, showing the, uh, the footages of the, from the rear and side, you know which one I mean?
Which, which one, sir? I'm not.
It was the very first one you showed. I don't know if I have a number. Survey, uh, Kelly Land Surveys.
Yes, give me one second.
Yeah, that one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Mr. Perry.
Yeah.
Looking at the plan on the, well, it's on my right. I don't know where it is on yours. But in the back, it says drive.
Yeah.
What is that referring to?
That's an existing, uh, parking area.
It's uncovered? It's concrete?
I believe it's asphalt.
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 The driveway.
Yep, and that's, that's existing.
Okay, and how do you get in there?
Uh, there's an, and there's an entrance right off of Birch Road, right there.
Right.
Birch, Birchcroft Road.
Okay.
Yeah, you come in this way.
So she actually has two frontages. She has Stonewood Lane and Birchcroft Road.
Yeah, because you're on a, on a corner lot.
On a corner lot, yep. So for her, most of the time, she parks in that driveway and walks down the back, the rear part of the house, and will enter into the new portion, you know, with the new deck right there in the rear. That's how she mainly gets into the house.
All right, you don't have a garage?
Um, that small little dog right there on the side is a one-single car garage?
Yeah, but it's not, it doesn't have a garage.
But it doesn't have a garage door. It's just a small storage area.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any questions. Uh, Michael, do you?
No, sir.
Richard, do you?
No.
Gary, uh, uh, Timmy?
Anyone?
No?
Neither do I.
Okay. All right, um, there being no questions so far from us. Um, is there anyone else in favor of this plan that is, uh, on this Zoom meeting? If you are, uh, you can either raise your hand or signify by, uh, something on the bottom, and Connor can see it.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see anyone raising their hand, but I would like to note for the record, I do have three letters of support. One is from Matthew Hislop of 50 Stonewood Lane. The other letter is from Michael Lee of 59 Birchcroft Road. And James Delaney of 55 Stonewood Lane is also in support as well.
Okay, thank you, because I don't have copies of those.
You do not. Okay.
Okay. Um, there being no one else that wishes to testify in favor, is there anyone opposed? Is there anyone opposed? If they are, they can signify via the Zoom.
I don't see anyone in opposition.
Okay, there being no opposition, we'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion among the, the members. Uh, Richie, a mic?
I have nothing to add to this. Pretty straightforward. It's actually a good-looking addition. Um, uh, if I can, unless Richie has something to say, I can make a motion right now.
No, that would be fine.
I'll make a motion to approve based on staff recommendation, subject to the submitted plans.
Second, the motion?
Motion's been made in second and to approve your petition subject to the staff recommendation and conditions, which will be included, Ms. Delaney. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone opposed? There's no opposition. Is this a finding, Connor?
Yes, it is, sir.
And the finding also is that what you're proposing is not more detrimental than, to the neighborhood than what already exists. Is Mr. Perry still there? Yes. I have one quick question regarding construction, which I, which, uh, I, as, uh, members on my board can tell you, I don't know that much about. Uh, but, um, my one question is about the new way that they put in foundations using fitted styrofoam forms. Have you seen that? They fill it cement, and that, the styrofoam becomes the insulation?
Yep, they do, you, they do, it's used, but the only thing is, it's, it can be very expensive form of doing foundation work.
Well, I like to spend Mr. Delaney's money. It means nothing to me. Okay, well, your, your petition has been approved. Good luck with your, uh, project now.
Great.
I want, I want to thank everybody on the board. I really appreciate the time and, uh, the approval. And, and, uh, can I just ask a question now that it, it's approved? What would be the next step? Do I wait to hear from the town on?
Uh, we have to sign the decisions, and they're filed with the town clerk. But you can call Connor sometime during the week, and he'll tell you what the rest of the process is.
Okay, great.
All right?
I appreciate it, and everybody have a great night.
Good luck.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Connor.
You're welcome.
All right, the next petition is, uh, petition 20-26, 75 Cardinal Court. Mark A. in Suelon McKinnon, are they present? I see one, two hands. Thank you. Thank you. You don't have to wear a mask on, uh, Mr. McKinnon because, uh, for me, you'll have to unmute yourself, Ms. McKinnon.
Okay.
There we go. Good to hear, sir?
Thank you.
Okay. Um, sorry, unfortunately, we are quarantined.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
We really both should be wearing masks right now, so.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. We, we, we're on Zoom, so we don't need a mask.
That's right. You don't.
You don't.
But we do.
She has to protect herself from me.
From him.
Oh.
Quarantined.
Oh, in that case, throw him out. I'm kidding.
That's why I need.
That's a little humor there. All right, let me.
He needs the new deck. I need him to sleep out on the new deck.
Okay, so this is the petition of Mark A. and Suelon McKinnon, applicant for relief from bylaw requirements under chapter 134, 403, 135, 609, and 135, 701, to demolish the existing 222-square-foot deck and construct a 399-square-foot deck at the rear of the single-family dwelling. The applicant seeks a finding to alter and extend the non-conforming rear yard setback from 9.1 feet to 2.6 feet where 30 feet is required. The property is located at 75 Cardinal Court, Braintree, Mass. In his own residence B, Watershed, as shown on assessors map 1097, plot 150, with a land area of 27,601 square feet. Connor, if I'm, if I'm going to say that the abutters and the abutters to the abutters within 300 feet have been duly notified, um, the recommendation of the planning board, again, if I remember correctly, uh, the recommendation was four to one. We'll endorse the staff recommendation, which, uh, they recommended favorable on their conditions. There are five conditions, uh, five, the usual conditions, which are, uh, I'll read, because if we, if we find in favor, these will be the conditions. There will be a 20-day, the applicant, after the 20-day appeal period expires, shall obtain a certified copy of the decision and record it with the registry of deeds. A copy of the decision will be filed with the, uh, town clerk and stamped. Shall be included with any building permit for a single-family dwelling. Any changes to the record will require zoning board of approval. Upon completion, um, and, and receiving final inspection, an as-built plan will be needed, signed by a registered professional surveyor. And this does not, approval does not authorize any topographical changes in violation of the zoning bylaws. You can certainly plant a tree or a rosebush, but there are certain, uh, topographical conditions that are written in our bylaws. Sitting on this petition will be myself, Mr. Ford, Mr. Walker. The alternate will be Mr. Burke. Okay, we'll hear from the petitioner and/or their representative. Yes, ma'am. You're muted. You're gonna have to unmute yourself.
We're not. Can you hear us?
Oh, we can, we can now.
Okay, it's my voice. Um, so we basically want to tear down the existing deck and replace it, make it larger, heading towards the, when you're facing the house, heading towards the left, not back towards the woods, but to the left side, which is free. And because our house is set back, it's not, the extension is not going to be to the neighbors' property or their house. The house was built on a lot that has a lot of ledge, so it was set back probably further than it should have been. I don't know if there were exceptions at the time it was built, but it's set back more than other houses on our street. So we can't go back towards the woods, and the only option is to go to the side, which is all empty space and wouldn't, um, be a problem to the neighbors. We did think about going the other side, but that would be a lot more construction, but also would impede on our other neighbors' privacy. We didn't want to do that. Um, and this is to, I guess, enjoy the outside more in our retirement, which is coming up, but to be honest, lately, I would be using it as workspace. And I plan on doing that if I get this next spring, because we're working from home a lot more than ever used to be, so.
What is, what is behind your proposed addition? Ms. McKinnon?
Is behind my addition?
Yeah, be, behind your proposed.
Oh, the town forest?
Okay. Okay. I don't have any other questions. Michael, do you?
No, sir. Uh, it, uh, full disclosure, uh, I live on Cardinal Court as well. Um, and I know, I know the, um, uh, the McKinnons, but, um, all anyone needs to, I have no, uh, conflict of interest here at all. Um, the, the only, yeah, all anybody really needs to do on this is to drive by this property, uh, see the ledge. I mean, it's very visible. Uh, the house was, was put on this lot. I think the only way it would actually fit, um, there's really no, um, there's no detriment to putting this in. Uh, there's, there's gonna be no impact on the neighbors at all. Uh, I did think they said they about town forest. Um, it's a pretty straightforward project.
Hey, thank you. Um, Gary, do you have any questions or any comment?
Yeah, I agree. Michael, it seems like it's pretty straightforward, very thoughtful plan, um, thinking of the neighbors, and it's, uh, it looks pretty straightforward to me.
Thank you. Richie, uh, Timmy, do you have anything you want to add?
No, nothing.
Um, I have, you know, being the new, new person on the board, I do have a question as far as, you know, I know they're looking to back up to the town forest. Who in town is responsible for looking out of the, for the interests of the, of the town forest?
That would, it would fall to a couple of different, I guess, jurisdictions. Uh, number one would be the conservation commission. Um, usually in regards to town-owned land, it's, it's really whoever, um, if I was to look at the assessors database, which I'm about to do right now, it would be whatever department's listed on that. Let me pull it up real quick, just one second. I believe it's the Concom Commission. Yeah, it's, it, it lists Town Hall, so I don't think there's like a, a set apartment that looks after it, most likely maybe DPW, um, for maybe some general upkeep. In terms of decision-making in regards to town-owned land, that's done through the town council.
Okay, um, so I guess the question is, you know, I know we talk about the abutters. Would those appropriate departments have also been notified and given the opportunity to weigh in?
As I said before, there's really no department. I mean, I can bring this before the, the town council, but I'm not too sure if the town council wants to make a stand on town-owned land, especially.
Who got notice, Connor?
On the abutters list?
From, yeah, for the town.
The town? Give me one second. Tower Braintree. That's, that's all that's listed.
And, uh, so that would go to the clerk's office, right?
Yeah, like, so for the assessors database on the abutters list, it lists Town of Braintree, co-owner Town Forest, mailing address Town Hall. So it doesn't list a specific department, nor does it reference this particular board or town council itself.
Well, I, uh, I'm satisfied that notice went out.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just looking for some clarification. I'm, I'm just looking for some clarification, that's all.
Yeah. And more than likely, Tim, it went to the town clerk's office, who would have notified somebody, would have notified somebody, but usually it would be the, uh, I mean, you send it to the, I know when you sue the town, you can, uh, serve the mayor or the town council. Um.
I mean, I mean, administrative decisions, usually when it comes to town-owned land, administrative decisions are made by the mayor himself or herself, depending on the situation. And if there are any significant changes, such as monetary or such as aspects involving land, that's usually done through a council vote. So really, it would be up to the mayor's office or town council if they wanted to seek any action on this.
Okay, and so are we actually the last stop in the process for this?
No, sir. Um, it's a two, two-part process. The first is the zoning board of appeals, as it needs to mention, or relief. In addition to that, uh, mostly Cardinal Court abuts the town forest, and the town forest is owned open space conservancy. Within the Braintree zoning bylaw, we have what's called a buffer zone. When you're in a Residence B or Residence A or Residence C zone, and you abut the open space zone, you're required to have a 30-foot buffer. And within that 30-foot buffer, the bylaw only calls for access. It doesn't allow for accessory structures. It does not allow for single-family dwellings. It does not allow for swimming pools, et cetera. So one of the options within the OSC buffer is you can request special permit from the planning board in order to place these features within the 30-foot buffer. Um, Mr. and Mrs. McKinnon have submitted a special permit application with the planning board. Their first advertisement just ran this Friday, um, but the next one running this Friday, and they are scheduled for the November 10th planning board meeting.
Okay, okay. So then, so then we're not actually, we're not granting a variance, we're simply granting a finding?
Correct, sir, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
And if we had to grant a variance, uh, based on the topography of that land and the, and the soil conditions being pretty much all ledge, it probably would qualify for variance in either way. Uh, but we're just making a finding. I, Tim, I know what you were questioning, whether or not the town got notice, and someone had noticed that this was coming up. And all I can assume is that it went to the town clerk's office, who would have notified either town council or, and/or the mayor's office. I shouldn't assume anything, but, but the town did get notice, so right now, I'm pretty comfortable in discussing this and, um, moving forward with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I was just clarification, that's all. I'm not against this at all.
No, 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 I, I know, but it was a good question.
No.
Uh, as to notice for the town and who specifically would get it. But in this case, I think it went to town council's office.
Yeah, that plus the fact that it's going in front of the, uh, planning board.
Please, Connor, make sure that, I mean, they should have gotten notice.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll double-check. I'll double-check.
Someone should have got notice.
Okay.
I mean, we, we work for the town, we, we definitely know. And in addition to that, um, with the planning board's side, we did a request for comment. So the request for comment goes to various town departments. Mayor's office receives correspondence, um, town council receives correspondence.
Yeah.
Et cetera, so that plenty of departments within the town have been notified of this proposal.
Okay, great.
Okay, uh, let me ask if there's any opposition that shows up on Zoom.
I don't see anyone with their hands raised, sir.
Okay, is there anyone else in favor that wishes to record themselves in favor or testify in favor on Zoom?
I do not see anyone in favor, sir.
Okay, in that case, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll open it up for discussion. Uh, Mike or Gary, any discussion?
I have nothing to add to this. Like I said, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, and if Gary's okay with it, I'd make a recommendation right now.
Go ahead, Michael, make your motion.
Make a motion to approve based on staff recommendations and, and conditions that the proposed project is not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Seconded.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve your petition. Uh, Ms. McKinnon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Your petition is approved with the finding that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood than what already exists, and that the conditions of the, uh, planning board are included. Um, good luck, Ms.
Mr. Chairman, could I just get a roll call vote, please, for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot.
That's okay.
Uh, Mr. Ford?
Mike Ford, aye, yes.
Uh, Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Uh, Stephen Carl, aye. So three affirmatives.
I'd just say, I've never heard to do anything like this with the town. I've lived here for 20-something years. Um, it was a kind of a complicated process at first, but I have to thank Connor. He was wonderful, and what a great person to have working for the town. Thank you, Connor.
Oh, you're very welcome, anytime.
Miss, don't say anytime. Ms. McKinnon. McKinnon, we've heard that from a number of people, and, uh, we're glad he works with us also. Thank you.
Very refreshing, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, the next petition is 20 dash 27, 25 Watson Street, Deepak Verma. Is, Deepak, there you are, sir.
Hi.
Aye, for relief from bylaw requirements under chapter 135, 403, 135, 407, 135, 701, for the construction of a second-story addition and rear porch to the non-conforming single-family dwelling. The applicant seeks a finding to intensify the non-conforming side yard setback of 8.9 feet, where 10 is, uh, required. The applicant also seeks a variance to construct a new porch and second-story addition over the previously approved first-floor addition. That was our docket number 1888, for a variance for the rear yard setback of 24.5 feet, where 30 feet is required. Property is located at 25 Watson Street, Braintree, Mass., uh, in his, his own Residence B, as shown on assessors map, 201, 1, plot 81, with a land area of 5,000 square feet. Uh, I'll say that I'm satisfied that the abutters and the abutters to the abutters within 300 feet have been duly notified. Recommendation of the planning board was five to nothing to endorse the staff recommendation. And again, Connor, I believe the staff recommended approval with, uh, six conditions. And this is for a variance, not just a finding. So sitting on this matter will be myself, Mr. Ford, Mr. Burke. The alternate will be Mr. McDonough. And we'll hear from the petitioner and/or his representatives. Yes, sir.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Deepak Verma. I'm, I'm the owner of the property. I'm, uh, living on the property for eight and a half years now. As I detailed in my petition, my living situation has been changed since I moved here. Uh, when I moved here first, I had a one-year-old. Now I have like two-year, uh, two, two kids, nine and four, boy and girl. And also, uh, my parents are living with us. So, uh, ju- just to ease with the situation, uh, this is the application I'm putting it in. The current setup of my house is that I have a one-bedroom downstairs and two up in the attic. And the way they are constructed currently is that you have to pass through one to the another one. Uh, and, uh, so my application is for construction of second-floor addition without going more than existing footprint of base of current house. So applying for the finding and the variance here. Uh, previous, uh, property owner, as stated earlier, uh, did receive, prior to me, uh, did receive a ZB approval, uh, in 1993 at the time, uh, rear, uh, rear addition, uh, with a relief for rear, uh, yard setback. I'm seeking a variance to construct a second story above and upon the rear addition without further encroaching the rear yard setback, and for which relief is presently being requested. I'm seeking to construct, if approved, a quality, a second-story addition in which four elevation sides are balanced and consistent. The proposed, uh, second story would not further encroach the side yards, and as, uh, such would not further adverse or detrimental to immediate abutters. Um, uh, I'd like, I'd also like to say that, uh, I'm, me and my family, living here for some time, are very attached to Braintree, my street, my neighbors especially, and my neighborhood. I, I did consider also talking to Mr. Connor and just going through all the documentation, uh, considered for applying for, just going for finding and not for variance, but the resulting house model looked like a little out of balance and not so consistent. So I can share some presentation now, if possible, to show you guys little details. Can I, Mr. Connor?
Uh, yes, give me one second. Let me. Should be able to now, Mr. Verma.
Thank you. Let me try. Okay, just want to confirm, you guys see the map?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So this is the proposed, uh, left side of the house, proposed again, right? So, uh, if if, if we went through the, uh, uh, for the variance, this is how it's gonna, this is how it's gonna look like. But, uh, if you just go for finding, so what happens? I'm, I'm just gonna share, like, this is how little awkward-looking design here. So we had to move it back for the rear, rear yard setback. I'll also show it from other side. Uh, so from right-hand side now, going for the variance, and without variance, I have to move it to the back. This is photoshopped, so sorry about my skills. I just did a Photoshop using my actual architect diagrams.
Lower your voice.
Uh, uh, actual architect diagrams, so I just photoshopped them myself, that, just to show you guys, uh, the variance versus, uh, uh, the finding.
Why did you have to move those portions back?
Sure, so this is existing house. Uh, I, I, in talking to Mr. Connor, uh, so, uh, so currently I am at, I'll show you the next map and explain that. So this is the proposed change right now. So this is where the property sits currently. So we are already, uh, the, the previous, uh, variance, uh, previous owner applied for, we already were 24.5. So to, uh, not go for variance and just go for finding, I have to move it back, like this. So that's why you saw the diagrams earlier, I can go back. So I had to move it back to not go for variance and go for only finding. So that's why I was just trying to, uh, visualize, like, how the map, uh, how, how the design will look as a result of it.
Would you want to move the sides out?
Sides.
With the house?
Uh, you, you mean this way?
Yeah.
Uh, the problem here is that there's no foundation. So this is the foundation currently. If I start going this way, uh, the.
No, I, I don't mean that way.
Okay.
You cut that back, right?
Yes, yes.
Would you want to move it out to the?
Yes.
That's the most desirable.
Well, where, where is the house now?
Uh, this is the hu- house right now. This is the street right here, and this is the, this is the current house, like, uh, this one and this one is currently in place right now.
The, that, the little square is in place?
Yes, yes, there's a, first floor is, uh, over there right now, correct. I'm just playing.
Why, I understand you said you would, you didn't go all the way out over the little square, so you would only have a finding as opposed to a variance?
Yes, yes.
Would you want to go all the way out over the little square?
Correct, yeah, that's, that's what we are applying for variance, yes.
That's what you're applying for?
Yes.
They add a second story to that?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, I got, you confused me.
Yeah, that, that's why I like, tried to draw two images, ju- just to clarify it.
Got it.
Yeah, this is the full, and this is the partial.
Okay. Okay. Mike, do you have any questions?
Uh, I am just a little confused. Are we cutting, are we cutting back or not?
So if I cut back, like, if I, I just went for finding, then I have to cut back, but I, I'm applying for variance, so, uh, uh, so that I don't have to cut back and just, like, build the full.
I, I understand, so you're, you're, you, you're looking to put the entire addition in right here, whether it be, you're not cutting back the size of the house now, and you're putting the addition over the entire.
Correct.
Okay, I'm clear, I'm clear now, I'm good with that.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Tim?
Uh, just if I can get some clarification from Connor. Connor, is the staff recommending approval or are the staff recommending against?
Uh, kind of two ways. So I am recommending approval. I'm recommending approval granted the applicant, shorten the second-story addition to only go over the original footprint of the house and not the edge of the house that received the variance. So let me, let me, Deepak, if you mind, I'm just gonna stop.
Sure, sure. There you go.
Thank you, thank you. Um, give me one second. I'm just gonna go to this, I'm gonna go to the plot plan. So as you can see, Watson Street right here, this is the front portion of the house. This area right here, this 15.67 by 16 addition received variance in 99, I believe.
Yep, 93.
99, pardon me. And in order for the applicant to construct a second story over this portion requires a variance. And in accordance with our bylaw in chapter 48, section 10, variances are granted through hardship. Um, it's a fairly square lot, you know, 53-foot frontage, 5,000 square feet of land, you know, it's a regular square lot, so there really are no hardships associated with it. Um, myself don't have a problem with it. It's just when looking at it under the state statute, i- it's a little tough to recommend favorable on a variance that does not have a hardship. So the staff recommendation is favorable action. Granted, the applicant stay within that, that main portion of the dwelling.
If I may, please, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, why would he need a variance at this point to build over something that's already existing? Uh, the the variance would be for a setback.
Correct.
Unchanging.
But they're intensive. If I may. So they received a variance to create that rear yard setback of 24.5. In order to go second story on that and keeping the same rear yard setback, they're going to need another variance.
So I guess, what was the, um, what was the reasoning behind allowing the variance the first time around? I mean, it was approved the first time around. What's changed now in 27 years that it, it can't be allowed?
I'm not too sure. I mean, I'll be honest, this is what the decision looks like from 1993. So.
Is there a really name on that decision?
Uh, we have Stephen Carl, we have Peter Lee, and we have George Knightendale.
Okay, um, I just, I, I, I think it's, and I understand where you're coming from, uh, you know, to intensifying the, the non-conformity, I guess, to what it is here now. I don't understand. I don't understand, um, well, I do, I g- I guess I'm okay now, let me, let me chew on this a bit.
Hey, should we test Steve's memory?
No, don't do that. So that was, again, Mike, that was my question, I didn't know why he wasn't going all the way out.
So if, if I may clear up some confusion, hopefully I can do so. The applicant is, has applied for both the finding and the variance to do the full second-story addition from the front, where my cursor is now, all the way to the rear here. In addition to that, the applicant has also submitted supplemental renderings that show, in addition, that will comply to the thirty-yard setback, the thirty-foot setback here, while also needing the finding to put the second-story addition over this setback here and this setback here.
So he'll be five-and-a-half feet short if we only allow the finding?
Correct, sir, yes.
Okay. Tim, how, how do you, what do you think about that?
Um, I'm not necessarily against it, I took a, I took a drive through the neighborhood earlier in the week, and, you know, I can see that there are similar structures on the street. Uh, I was just a little concerned that the, that the staff was recommending against, so I wanted to get clarification. Against the variance.
Well, they are against the variance, but they're for the, they're for the, uh, although Connor personally says he doesn't, well, forget that. All right. Um, let me ask if there's anyone else in favor of this proposal?
Um, are you asking for the general public, sir?
Yes.
We have two hands raised, if I can forward them.
Go ahead.
The first is Kristen and Kevin Harriman, which I will allow to talk. You just have to unmute yourselves.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
This is Kristen Harriman, I live directly across the street from Deepak and Hina. I just want to say, first of all, they're exceptional neighbors, and I'm so glad that they're doing addition instead of looking to move out of the neighborhood because we really want them to stay. Secondly, I've looked at both sets of, um, the renderings, and I think it makes complete sense to grant both the variance and the finding. The drawings with the finding and the variance approved are more aesthetically pleasing. Um, it makes such, much more sense to have a full second-story addition rather than a little jog at the end. Um, and I think it'll fit really well into the neighborhood. Um, additionally, we're, we're a bit of a, a tight-knit neighborhood, so we also have my husband Kevin Harriman and our neighbor Heather Zabaretzky, who lives next door to us as well, who also wants to speak in favor, so.
Um, I'm a neighbor of Deepak, and, um, I've seen the plans to the house myself. I have no issues with them, I think it looks much better if you just put the full addition on. Um, we want them to stay in the neighborhood, great neighbors, um, it's nothing that, with all the other houses on the street, you know, it'll fit right in, so.
We also have extensive experience with the general contractor, and he's been absolutely wonderful, correct?
Who is that?
My new name is Verma Contractor, Jim Morrissey.
So yes, we're very much in favor.
Okay, is there somebody else?
Can I just get your address real quick, uh, Kristen and Kevin?
Kristen and Kevin are at twenty-six Watson Street.
Twenty-six Watson, okay.
And Heather Zabaretzky is at twenty-two Watson.
Heather Zabaretzky, twenty-two Watson, awesome. Thank you very much.
Was there somebody else in favor?
Yes, sir, Kevin McHugh, I will allow him to talk. Kevin, can you, can you talk? Can you hear us? Kevin, are you there? Hello?
You have to unmute yourself if you wanna talk.
He's unmuted, sir.
He's unmuted?
Mm-hmm.
I hear nothing.
Yeah, neither do I, so. Allah. Hold on, there's one chat.
They're trying to help him unmute.
Yup, yup. Kevin? They just said one minute, sir, on the chat.
Kevin, are you there?
They just said one minute, please, they're-
One minute again?
Kristen and Kevin, is Kevin McHugh with you right now?
Unless he's barking in support.
Sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so Kevin McHugh just came over to our house because he couldn't figure it out on his computer, so please, Kevin, take it away.
All right, my name is Kevin McHugh, I live at thirty Watson Street, and, um, I am totally in favor of this. I would like to say that I have appeared before the board in the last couple of years for two other neighbors who were doing similar projects, and all it has done is enhance the neighborhood, and we wanna keep everybody here because this is the best neighborhood in Brantree.
Do, uh, do the three of you wanna chip into the cost?
Mutant.
I don't hear you.
All right, thank you, Kevin, thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
And thank you, uh, Heather, appreciate your time. Is there anyone opposed?
I do not see anyone with their hand raised, no.
Okay, in that case, we'll close, uh, that portion of the hearing and open it up for discussion.
Mister Chairman, sorry to interrupt, but if I may, I'm going to share my screen real quick.
Okay.
We do have, give me one second, I'm looking for it. Mister Verma did submit, um, several signatures of, of support for approval of this project, subject to the plans submitted with the application.
Okay, thank you, Connor.
Connor, I'm sorry, while you're sharing your screen, could you put up the, uh, plot plan again, please?
Sir, give me one second. Let's see, is this it? Here you go.
So Mike, again, if he, if we only gave him a finding, his project would be about five-and-a-half feet short, rather than going to the full length of the house.
You, you know, Steve, and that's what I'm looking at here, to me, i- it seems, um, i- it really seems ludicrous to, to take, to go out the entire way. I just don't see any reasoning to grant a variance. Um, it's, it's a squared-off lot, uh, the house sits on it squarely. Um, I, I just, I, what would be, you know, is, is there a ledge, but that wouldn't pre- I mean, we're talking about, the, the foundation's already in.
I would use the same, I would use the same reasoning to grant a variance to go all the way out, that we did when we used that addition initially.
And, and I guess, what, what was that, I, can we, can we make a, a motion that says, based on the approval uh, of the last variance, that we find no reason not to grant this variance?
They can use the same language.
Um, a little tough.
You can use the same language for the initial variance, I assume.
So can I read the findings made in, um, nineteen ninety-three decision? Can I just read them out loud to you real quick?
Sure.
Applicant seeks permission to alter the non-conforming home by adding additional living space. As pointed out in the planning board's report, there is no possibility of adding to the structure without violating at least one want line provision. We find that these proposed alterations will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood than what presently exists. Applicants' requests under section seven oh one deal with about a six-inch intrusion to the side yard, about a six-foot intrusion into the rear yard area, and just less than two feet with respect to the front yard minimum. We find that relief can be granted to these variances without substantial detriment to the public good, without nullifying substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw.
It's a perfectly well, well-sounding decision.
My mother would say self-praise is no praise, Steve. But, I, sorry, I am good with that verbiage, I think, I really think, uh, the, the argument's been made to keep the size the way it is uh, and allow for the variance with the, uh, a full second-floor addition.
And, um, where's the petitioner? Is he still here?
Yes, hi, yes.
Oh. Um, well, okay, I don't wanna forget what I'm gonna, forget my question. Um, I have no objection to going all the way out to a full addition either. And I, Connor, I know what you're saying, um, but-
I understand it both ways, I, I, I believe there are findings to be made that, you know, maintaining the orientation of the single-family dwelling, you know, proves to be beneficial not only to the property but to the neighborhood as a whole, um, as, you know, there are second-story additions within the Watson Street neighborhood. Um, providing a full second-story addition will keep the single-family dwelling in harmony and character for the residence B, single-family neighborhood, in my opinion as well. Um, so I, I, I understand your, your point of view, the board's-
And I, and I'm sure if you went down a foot or two, you'd find some ledge.
Yeah, there's a ton of ledge all over.
I know. Okay, I think, um, I, I would need, oh, I'm sorry. I'll, I'm, I'm, I'm done, I'm sorry.
Okay, Tim.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm more of the opinion that, of, that you are, Steve, that, um, you know, I think it's more aesthetically pleasing that if you give them, if we give them the variance, so allow them to construct the house versus it being, uh, you know, cut up by five-and-a-half foot. Um.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't have any objection to that either, Tim, and I don't think, Mike, does, does somebody wanna make a motion?
I would make a motion to grant the variance based on, uh, verbiage used in the variance of nineteen ninety-three, uh, to allow for the, uh, proposed addition, uh, subject to the plans and based on staff's recommendations and conditions.
And I would second that.
A motion's been made to approve, uh, to approve the, uh, petition of the full length of the, uh, addition based on the nineteen ninety-three decision verbiage. And the verbiage, I also like the verbiage that Connor used regarding the, um, the neighborhood, uh, uh, conditions of the homes in the neighborhood regarding second stories there. Um, I think it would be not, it wouldn't look pleasing to have a five-and-a-half-foot jog left in the side of the house. Plus, it would give, uh, the petitioner the living space that he probably would need uh, to enjoy. Um, so that motion's been made and seconded, subject to the conditions of the planning board. Um, I guess I have to take a roll call vote. Mister Ford?
Aye.
Mister Burke?
Aye.
Uh, Steve Carl, aye. Uh, where's the petitioner?
Hi.
Um, your petition has been approved, subject to those conditions. If you have any questions, sir, about the process, you can call Connor tomorrow. And, uh, since the neighbors were so much in favor, I think you ought to look for a contribution.
Definitely. I, I'd like to thank the board members and, uh, chairman, and definitely Mister Connor, as other folks also said, he guided me through the process and helped me out, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Deepak.
Thank you.
Thanks, Connor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey.
Okay, the last petition is twenty-dash-twenty-eight Five Arthur Street, Angelo and Susan Lapaglia, uh, applicant for relief from bylaw requirements under chapter one thirty-five, four oh three, one thirty-five, seven oh one, and one thirty-five, seven oh seven, to demolish a portion of the attached single-car garage and construct a twenty-three-foot by thirty-five-foot, five-hundred-and-seventy-five-square-foot in-law addition to the non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The applicant seeks a finding as the proposed, proposed addition will alter and extend the non-conforming side yard setback from four-point-four feet to four-point-six feet, where ten feet is required and will alter and extend the non-conforming rear yard setback.
That was hor- yeah, that was, that was a joke. Yeah.
Uh,
It is false.
Of ten-point-eight feet to ten-point-three feet, where thirty feet is required. The property is located at Five Arthur Street, Brantree, in its own residence B, as shown on Assessors Map three oh oh two, plot two, with a land area of seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight square feet. I'm satisfied that the abutters, and the abutters to the abutters within three hundred feet have been duly notified. Uh, recommendation of the planning board. And I believe the planning board recommended, uh, favorable based on the staff's recommendation. The staff recommended, uh, several conditions, seven conditions, uh, which are the usual conditions that we have read in the past. I see Ms. Lapaglia.
Hi.
Hi, and I see, uh, Mister D- Daron, Daron?
Yep, yep.
Are you in the, are you, uh, abutter or building?
I'm the general contractor, yeah.
Okay, can I just ask, uh, that we take a minute and a half, uh, break, and I, and I'll be right back, and then I'll announce uh, the members that are gonna sit on this, a minute and a half.
Yeah, absolutely, sir.
Time me call.
Yeah.
How did I do, Connor?
Wow, I should have bet the under on that one, to be honest. Pretty well.
Okay. I think we have everybody back but Timmy and Gary.
Right.
Correct, yes.
You know, Connor, these Zoom meetings are going very well. It's very nice. We ought to continue it in the future, way into the future. We don't have to leave the house.
I know, I know.
Especially on a snowy or rainy night.
Yeah. Hey, I feel bad for the kids of today's generation when, hopefully when things go back to normal, they don't have snow days anymore. They just have to pull out their laptops.
Right. All right, we'll just wait for Gary to come back.
It was a little troubling to me just then when Connor said that he felt bad for the kids today. Just Connor's so much younger than the rest of us here.
Yeah, no kidding.
Actually, all of you are a lot younger than me. That's okay.
Hey, I have to pay health insurance this year. I'm not too happy about growing up, to be honest with you.
You sound like my children, Connor.
Yeah.
Yeah, your parents are probably planning a vacation now.
Yeah, seriously, seriously.
Okay, let me announce the members that are going to sit on this, which will be myself, Mr. Ford, and Mr. McDonough. Mr. Walker will be the alternate. Okay, we'll hear from Ms. Lapaglia, and we'll hear representatives.
I'm going to turn it over to Steve in a moment, but I just want to thank you all for letting us come together tonight. And Connor, I sent him so many emails. I dragged my poor 87-year-old mother into town hall because she was so nervous to leave the house, but she wanted to see what was going on. I'm moving my mom in, she's getting a little ill, and I just want to have a nice space for her. We've been on Off the Street, it's actually my first home ever. We've been here for 22 years. I raised two boys here, my husband, and we're just looking forward to opening up the space for my mom. So I'll leave it to Steve to do all the explanation.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Well, there isn't much to explain, just a general contractor, but I do have a close tie with this project because it happens to be my wife's aunt who the project's for. Susan's my wife's cousin. It's all special. One thing I did want to bring up to all is that I did notice that we had it on paper, there was a typo. It's a 23-by-25 addition that we want, which the calculations are correct, it's 575 square feet. Somebody typed 35, that would be 805 square feet. We're just doing the 23-by-25, so just so there's a clarification on that.
Yep. I did notice that also, but the sizes are correct on the drawing.
Yep, exactly. The square footage mentioned on the rest of the document was correct, so I think it was just somebody hit a three instead of a two.
That would be me, I apologize.
That's okay, go on.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
So it's just a straightforward in-law. I was surprised that, I knew they wanted, we changed out the casing, the requirement now for the cased opening. I was surprised that they wanted me to take away from the means of egress. By code, we're supposed to have a front and rear. God forbid there's a fire, but we also did that, too. So now, you know, you know, she'll have to, she's mid to late 80, she's going to have to try to go into the existing house and go out their back door instead of her own. God forbid there was ever an emergency. But to abide by whatever the town needs, we changed that out on the plan, so.
Why was that, Connor? Why couldn't have?
So, not to drag the applicant into this, but we've had an ongoing issue within the town of Braintree in regards to in-law apartments. The way they're permitted currently is through the building department because they're permissible under the building code. Fortunately, our zoning bylaws don't speak to in-laws anywhere, not even in the definitions, no wear and accessory uses for residential areas. So the only catching object we have in regards to in-law units is through the building code. And to, you know, minimize the effect of in-law units, because once they come in, we're starting to see these in-laws become two-family dwellings. And to be honest, they get a building permit, and all of a sudden, you see a house on the market, and it's got two front doors, it's got two kitchens, you know, three baths, all these different things, and it looks and smells like a two-family. So the way I've always been advised since working here, especially with the building inspector, is they have to have a common entry, and that's also through the building code as well. They need to come in and almost share the space of the single-family dwelling in order to be considered a true in-law. And without having those provisions of front and back, because if they have a front door and they have a rear door, what's the difference between an in-law and a two-family dwelling at that point?
Yeah, we definitely want the big opening because I don't want her to be separated, so it will just be like, you know, just a cased-out door.
No, I understand.
That's, we have that included. I was concerned about the rear door.
The rear door, yeah. Yeah, I understand the front door, one front door, that's not the issue. The issue would be the rear door, should she have to get out there on her own somehow.
Yeah, we're going to build a deck there, but she can't get out to the deck. She'd have to go out through their house, you know, through that cased opening, and then out their back door, which goes to that deck.
Yeah.
We put a window there instead of the door. There was originally a door there, the back right-hand side there.
Put a slider.
We could do that.
Yeah, I think the only reason we did this, the living quarters are so small, we'd be taking away wall space. We had just a 3680 there.
Okay. Now, is there going to be a kitchen? I have my own feelings about a house with two kitchens. It's the famous Ernie Bach case in Edgertown. He has a mansion in Edgertown, Harvard, and it had three or four floors, and he had a kitchen on every floor. And they wanted to make him take away the kitchens. He took them to court, and he won. They said, and I don't remember if it was the Land Court or the Supreme Court or Superior Court, but they said that he could have a kitchen on every floor of the house if he wanted to, it's his house, regardless of what the bylaw said. How many kitchens are you going to have? One, just yours, Ms. Lapaglia? Are you going to have one?
We're going to make her a mini kitchen. Sorry, she really, it's very hard to get her to come move. She's very independent, but she's getting, you know, she's getting a little, she has some health issues. And I'm just trying to make her independent. She wants her to make her own tea and, you know, make her own sandwiches. She wants a little kitchen. She, I'll drive Steve crazy because it would be very small.
I would want her to have that, too. I have no objection.
I need to make it comfortable.
Can she cook?
Yeah, she's a good cook. She's a good Irish cook.
Can she make hot dogs?
She likes hot dogs. She won't use a formant.
Good, good for her. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Derone?
Oh, I'm good. I think, unless you guys had some questions, but it's pretty straightforward, just a small little in-law.
Just getting, who's on the other side of Ernest and Marjorie Sullivan is on that side?
Yeah, we're on the corner.
Have you spoken to them?
Oh, yeah, they've signed a letter. They're very good friends, they're very excited. They've met my mother, she's here all the time.
Well, it's not a question of liking your mother, it's a question of...
No, they don't have any trouble with the construction, no.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there are three signatures of support. One is from Bernie and Maureen Menton of Two Arthur Street. One is Bernie and Margie Sullivan of 17 Arthur Street. And the third one is John and Nancy Carlson of 74 Gordon Road.
In the middle by the seat.
Yeah, they're right behind you.
Yep.
Correct, yep. Okay. Right at this time, I don't have any questions. Michael, do you?
No, sir.
Richie, do you?
No questions, Chairman Cal.
Timmy?
No, I think this is pretty straightforward. Well, I do have one question, it's just out of curiosity. Is there going to be an elevation change for your mother's apartment? Is there going to be a step up or down?
Grade will remain the same. It'll have to be fluid.
No, I mean...
From the cased opening? Are you talking about from the cased opening to the, where she would enter into their home? No.
And, you know, I agree with your mother wanting to have her independence. My wife and I have been thinking about an in-law with our daughter as well, as we start planning to get older, and we definitely want our independence as long as we can have it, so.
Tim, I'll drop a card by, all right?
Okay.
There you go. How about you? Gary?
I have no, I guess I do, I do have one question, I guess. It applies to that back door going up to the deck. Is that something that is off the table, or is that something we could discuss? I think that would lend to her independence to be able to go out on the deck on her own without having to go through the home, but that's just...
No, I think she has to go up the stairs to get out there.
Okay.
Back door. It's the one on her level that was the issue.
Okay.
No question. Mr. Derone?
Yeah, basically, you know, off the floor height to the back door, they wanted that. They didn't want us to have that there, so we just made that a window.
Yeah.
But could we put that in?
That, if I may add, that, Steve, correct me wrong, but did Russ Forsberg, the building inspector, instruct you to remove the door and put the windows in?
Somebody did. It might have been him at that point. I know, I know the whole thing, and we all know that, because people start renting them out. That's why, you know, and something happens to the parents, next thing you know, it's two individual mailboxes, and, you know.
Yeah.
But that's why there's a five-foot cased opening, I know that, you know.
But the front door, it would be part of the house, it would still be part of the same house, it would just have an extra door going up to the deck. I don't think that, I don't know, maybe...
It's just a safe means of egress, that's all that would be. Instead of climbing out the window if she couldn't get it into their house, but...
Is the deck going to have stairs into the backyard?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not many, three or four.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, to be honest with you, if the zoning board of appeals wants to allow it, that's one thing, but I think it's more so the building inspector being wary of, you know, while we're focused on this situation now, 10 years down the line, who knows what's going to happen? And that's what we're trying to prevent, is 10 years down the line, all of a sudden a wall goes up, they got a front door, they got a back door. That's what we're trying to prevent here. I understand, though, I mean, besides for a condition that says this shall remain a single-family dwelling, that's really, I'm not too sure.
The way I work is we're here to please. Whatever you guys want us to do, we're going to do, so you tell us.
I have to go along with what the building inspector says.
Okay.
That's for now, anyway.
Okay.
So really, the only issue is the closeness to the side yard.
In the rear yard, sir.
In the rear yard.
So they're actually improving the side yard setback. They're going from 4.4 to 4.6. And then the rear itself will be impacted just slightly as it's going down from 10.8 to 10.3.
So this is, this is a finding or a variance? It's a variance?
It's a finding, sir. So the dwelling itself is existing nonconforming, and tomorrow it's going to be nonconforming as well. So they only need a finding that it's not substantially more detrimental than currently exists.
Well, Ms. Lapaglia, when it's done and your mother is in, tell her she's got five people that would like a sandwich on her new...
I will tell her, and she can't wait to watch baseball all day because it's right at the park, and she loves it, so...
She's a Red Sox and Bruins fan, so...
Thank you.
Well, we haven't voted yet, don't thank us yet.
That's okay.
Okay, well, is there anyone else in favor on Zoom?
Nope.
Is there anyone opposed on Zoom?
Nope.
We'll close the public portion of the hearing and open it up for discussion. Is there any discussion from any of the members?
I have nothing to add.
No? Richie? No?
Not at this time. It was great to see the support of the neighbors, especially, you know, being that close-knit there, because I know the neighborhood as well, and it looks like a good project, so that's helpful, you know.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve based on staff's recommendation with a finding that the project is not more detrimental to the neighborhood and with conditions stated in the report.
Second that motion?
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the petition subject to the recommendations of conditions of the planning board with a finding that what is proposed is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than what already exists. We'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. McDonough?
Aye.
Steve Carl, aye. Your petition is approved. Good luck, Ms. Lapaglia.
Thank you.
Mr. Derone, thank you. Let me ask you about the, you heard me ask about the foundation walls with the styrofoam?
Yeah.
Have you seen them or used them at all?
I haven't had to. So I can't say yes on that.
Oh, it just seems to make it easier. It is a little more expensive, but they become insulated walls with the styrofoam.
Yeah, I have the luxury of hiring professional insulating contractors to handle that for me.
Okay. Good luck, sir, thank you.
We always make sure we pass code, and that's what's important, you know?
Yeah. Well, according to Mike Holmes, you always want to do a little more if you can.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir, you're all set, Mr. Derone.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Connor.
Very welcome.
Okay, now for the old business of the board. I don't think there is any old business.
No, we just have, the only pressing matter tonight is the approval of many meeting minutes.
Of the previous on the Foddy A projects?
Correct, yes. We have three meetings, January 6th, January 8th, and February 10th, all in relation to the Chapter 40B application over at South Branchy Square.
Okay, I know they were quite lengthy, but does someone want to make a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting?
Before we do that, I did notice, and unfortunately, I left them at my desk at work, there are some typos, and it doesn't change the minutes per se, but can we approve them with the typos in it?
Or, you can make a motion to approve the minutes as, you can make a motion to approve the minutes with the ability for staff to edit for grammar and punctuation.
Then that would be so moved for the meetings of January 6th, 2020, January 8th, 2020, and February 10th, 2020, to approve the minutes with that caveat.
Do I hear a second?
Can I ask a question before we do?
Yeah.
I haven't seen the minutes.
So, Tim, you weren't, just, nothing against you, but you weren't involved in the Chapter 40. You weren't involved in the application, it was really just Mike, Gary, Stephen, and Rich, so that's why they weren't sent to you?
Okay.
I can forward the email to you if we'd like, if you want to review them, but...
Yeah, I would, and I'm okay with it, it's...
Okay. I think that was, that was just an administrative thing done by our secretary, she...
Sure.
Okay, so a motion's been made by Mr. Ford. Did I hear a second? Second by Richie. We'll have a roll call vote to accept the minutes. Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. McDonough?
Aye.
Steve Carl, aye. The minutes are accepted. Uh, the minutes are accepted, subject to the, uh, grammar and, uh, spelling errors and, uh, in, involved. Um, fellas, thank you very much again for joining, for coming on Zoom. Uh, Connor, I would email or text DPAC Verma. He's still showing up on the screen.
Yes, hi there.
Oh, you can hang up, sir.
Oh, okay, okay, sure.
He's just a fan.
Oh, yeah. He's more so curious in the process.
Yeah. Okay, gentlemen, until the next meeting, uh.
So I, I do anticipate having a petition on for November. Um, I won't go in too much about what it is and, um, where we're going with it, but I do anticipate in an application for November. Um, it's something we haven't, you know, seen before, but um, really it.
You're scaring me a little bit, Connor.
It's, it, it hasn't been filed yet, so I, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna jinx it, but, uh, it's, uh, it's something that might be coming back to us, so we, you know.
Oh, it's the remand?
Per se, yeah. It hasn't been filed yet, so I don't wanna speak to it.
Yeah.
Boy, if that, if that doesn't pique somebody's curiosity.
Well, it's the remand of the Foddy, uh, of the, uh, of the Arista Development.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
And, uh, I, I don't know if you were here then, Tim, or not. But, uh, I know Mike and Richie and Gary were, so.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much. Enjoy, stay safe, be well.
Can I get a roll call motion vote to end the meeting?
Yeah, just, Mike, just so you know, I had pearl hot dogs for dinner.
Very good.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Uh, let me start on the top and go, Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Um, Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. McDonough?
Aye.
Steve Carl, aye, aye. Uh, meeting is adjourned. Uh, again, stay safe, be well.
Stay safe, guys.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.